Good evening and welcome to the May 3, 2022, City Council Meeting. I'm Mayor Barbara Noesworthy.
Do we have a roll call? Counselor Baxter?
Present.
Counselor Bosmans?
Present.
Counselor Beal?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Here.
And Mayor Noesworthy?
Present. I'm going to start this meeting with my personal acknowledgement of a legacy issue, and I want to make very clear that this is my statement and does not reflect the statement of individual councils or... For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Newt bands, the Dene, Navajo, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the U.S. government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective, with out-recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. May we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Mayor, we have Carlos on the line for that.
Wonderful. Carlos?
Yes, thank you very much. Hello, everyone. My name is Carlos alongside Diego. We are with Community Language Co-op. There with us as we interpret. We want to thank you for prioritizing health equity through language justice as much... We want to make sure everyone is able to speak, read, listen, and participate in the language of their hearts and in the one that they speak with their families or best connected. The interpretation setting... Click on "How to Select Your Language," then hear the original audio. Otherwise, it can be distracting or confusing. Please make sure that keep your microphone on mute to hear the speaker clearly. I will keep my camera off to encourage everyone to look at the speaker. Thank you for your time. Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Carlos, y junto con Diego somos... Podemos tener paciencia en lo que nosotros interpretamos, lo que sea. Dar la equidad en salud a través de la justicia del lenguaje tanto... Queremos asegurarnos de que todos puedan hablar, leer, escuchar, y...
Audio on Carlos. No.
Haga clic en el globo para seleccionar su idioma. De ahí puede silenciar el audio original. De lo contrario, puede ser un poco confuso. Por favor, resumese de mantener el micrófono en silencio para escuchar con altavoz. Lo tenemos. I'm good to go.
Thank you so much. Item number four is... Before we were done, item four, I would like to add... I would like to switch that order so that we can do the...
The protest.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Could we also have a discussion to appoint one more person and possibly change that appointment to the board's commission? So if you allow that to take place as an inch?
Yeah, I would make a motion to make that change to add the voting on a board and commission member to underneath item 13.1.
A second. May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Noesworthy?
Yes. Great. So, we will now move into public... Oh, excuse me, no. Item number four, identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest. Does any counselor have a perceived or actual conflict of interest with anything on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to item number five. Public participation either in person and via Zoom. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the City Council. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be sent... I believe we'll start with... We will start with those in the room, and I think our first public comment will come from Lisa Shaw. Yes, and would you please indicate if you are a resident of the city?
Thank you, councilors, staff. My name is Lisa Shaw. I live at 1309 East Third Avenue. I'm also one of the owners of the Smiley Building, but I come to you tonight in support of the Citizens Initiative, and I wanted to bring a human face and voice to this because I know how... ...make assumptions about people, and I think that can be a real problem as we try to solve these issues. First, there's so many issues about this that it's hard to give sufficient time, so I'm just going to try to zero in and focus on a few things. I live and work at the Smiley Building. Been there for 25 years, and I think the character of the neighborhood would be radically shifted by having fire trucks in and out, et cetera, changing Buckley Park and raising completely the building there, the Arts and Sciences Building. I think I invite you to come over to the area and sit and be around. There's kids walking in and out of school every day. There's after-school programs in the neighborhood. There's a huge multimodal traffic, bikes coming through that area, and I'm concerned about so many of the issues. But I want to just say that I'm, first, really sad that this issue has gone on so long and that, as a circulator of the petition, I always told people that were listening to the issues that the fire department has not had a home and that we, as supporters of this initiative, really want this to be solved and have the fire department have an adequate, beautiful, efficient home. I do not believe that this is a suitable site. There are so many reasons that I can't go into here, but what I want to say is I sat at the study session today, and I heard the fire district urge you not to miss this opportunity to partner with them. I would like to say, as a citizen of Durango, not only is a neighbor... That is actually not why I'm here. This is not a NIMBY issue for me. This is a community-wide issue, and I talked to people in and out of the city, all over the county. I talked to hundreds of people as I was getting signatures for this. So, the opportunity for me to personally interface with all these people was incredibly influential, and I think that I want to urge you not to miss the opportunity to really look at this in a broader sense and not just look at numbers crunched, but look at heart and soul of the neighborhood, the suitability of use. It does not feel appropriate to me to redevelop this site. So, I urge you, as councilors, to think about what would be a more suitable, a higher and better use for the citizens of Durango than this. And I want to again repeat that I really support the fire department in having a new facility. I hope that the councilors... I'm sorry, this wound has been untended for so many decades. This is very sad for me and many people that I talk to on the street. So, I really hope that we can find a win-win for the fire department, for the city, for the citizens around this issue, and I hope that we can talk further. I know there's people in the Citizens Initiative group that would love the opportunity to really discuss this with councilors. I urge you to consider that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. And this is a note to Tom. Tom, will you be able to start the clock for us shortly after the people state their name? Thank you. The next person we have is Jessie McVon.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the Durango City Councilors. My name is Jessie McVah, and I'm the incoming Durango High School Secretary Treasurer. April was a good month to be a demon. Some of the highlights are: Durango Student Council is proud to announce that we were recognized as a national gold council of excellence by the National Association of Student Councils. We were one of 10 schools to be honored in Colorado and one of 235 nationwide. In Colorado, there are over 415 traditional public high schools. Durango High School was notified that we are in the top 50 traditional public high schools in the state of Colorado. These rankings are a compilation of test scores, graduation rates, and scores on college-level exams such as AP. Our work with the Homeground Talent Initiative and Career and Technical Education continues to move forward. Last month, we hosted a CTE/HTI regional site visit with educators and advocates from around the region. Look for some exciting changes as we start to start taking place in the CTE and HTI programs this summer. On April 9, we held our first prom in three years. We had over 430 students and their invited guests attend. We would like to say thank you to our Community Parent Group and the Durango Community Rec Center for organizing and hosting our after-prom and doing an excellent job of keeping Durango High School students safe. We are proud to say that there was not one incident or accident involving a Durango High School student reported on prom night. Durango Police Department Detective Josh Newman presented several sessions to both our parents and students about the things to watch out for involving social media. We appreciate Detective Newman taking his time to come in and remind us about an ongoing issue in our community that we should be aware of. Our vocal and instrumental music programs traveled to the Greeley Jazz Festival, where our DHS Jazz Band, Colors Choral Group, and Treble Choir all received excellent ratings. Theater Troop 1096 opened their spring performance this past weekend. They are presenting Into the Woods, a story of a witch who tasks a childless baker and his wife with procuring magical items from a classic fairy tales to reverse the curse put on their family tree. Performances continue this weekend. For more information, you can go to the Troop 1096 website. DECA, Durango High School's business and career program, had a successful April. We had 15 business students qualify for the state DECA competition. Four advanced to the national competition with Tommy Pope finishing fourth. The chapter was also recognized as a community service award recipient for the second year in a row. Looking forward, we would like to invite each of you to the DHS Class of 2022 commencement ceremony on Friday, May 27 at 6:00 p.m. If you'd like to attend or need more information on graduation, please contact our graduation coordinator, Melinda Wood, or Libby Chen, Class of 2022 president. Finally, this will be our last update for the year. I would like to introduce some of my fellow student body officers who will be continuing our legacy next year. This is Rose Ryder, our student body vice president. Also, after 31 years, our student council advisor, Dale Garland, is retiring. I'd like to introduce Michelle Flom, who has been selected to lead our program and who I know looks forward to continuing the relationship we have established with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie.
Well, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, as the last year's mayor and being on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Group, it was great to work with you, Dale. I really appreciate it, and I know that you've just contributed so much to the lives of the high school students, so thank you very much.
If I can echo that, congratulations, Dale. That is really great news, but you will be missed. You have touched so many students through your career and impacted so many lives. Thank you. And also, will you please convey my congratulations to Tommy Pope? That's great news, and how wonderful that you guys were able to have prom again finally. That's great. Thank you.
One more person signed in, and please forgive me, I'm not quite certain if this is an L or an I. Joe Swanyay?
Yes, thank you.
Did I do okay?
I got my Josie.
Josie, okay.
Yes, good evening, council and staff. I am not going to make eye contact. I'm going to read really fast because of my three minutes and the timer is going. So, good evening. My name is Josie Swanyay. I live at 1250 East Fourth Avenue on the east side of Mason Park. I am here this evening to respectfully ask each of you to protect Mason Park and preserve Mason Park's open recreational green space for all of Durango's citizens and visitors and not allow any kind of residential development to be built on this precious sacred ground that is visited every day by many, many, many children, teenagers, adults, elderly, dogs, and a few deer. I'm asking you to uphold and honor your stated commitment that is printed on the City of Durango's website that states that City Council, quote, "has a strong commitment to protect our environment and to preserve the open space of our beautiful natural lands." Well, guess what? Mason Park is a beautiful natural land in the historical district of Durango and needs to be respected and protected as such. In the January 22 Master Plan for Park and Open Space, a table is listed that shows the results of a survey of Durango citizens. The findings were that 83% of the respondents indicated the need, desire, and importance of neighborhood parks in Durango. Neighborhood parks rank third out of 32 facilities listed as the most needed, desired, and important facility in Durango. Your role on City Council is to represent the highest good for all of Durango and not cater to special interest groups. As you know, Durango has earned the designation of a Tree City for 42 years because it meets the criteria for the Tree City USA program, which includes investing in urban forest. Mason Park is an urban forest. Why would you even consider cutting down trees in a designated urban forest such as Mason Park that serves the all in order to build a housing project that would serve only a few? Yeah, I'm rattled up. It does not make sense. Lastly, the City of Durango Park and Recreation's vision is to keep Mason Park as Mason Park. They understand the value of an urban park close to downtown that everyone has access to. Why is the City Council not in alignment collaborating with one of its own department's experts who specialize in park management? I know the city owns many properties in Durango. May I suggest that you find a more suitable property to build any real estate project you are considering and not take away from our established neighborhood park? In conclusion, I ask that you be good stewards of our city's open space environment and preserve, nourish, and protect Mason Park as a park such that it can be enjoyed by all regardless of social status, economic class, political agenda, or financial gain. Please safeguard Mason Park from any urban residential development now, in our future, and for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie.
Rah rah!
And you tried hard to stay within the three minutes, but went over a bit.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Great energy.
Tom, do we have anyone virtually who's raised their hand and wants to speak?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. No one from Zoom? Then we will go to item six, the executive session. We will need a vote for this. This is... The executive session will take place at this time if it is agreed upon. We need a... It's about a discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property regarding Buckley Park, the Carnegie Building, and other city facilities as permitted in CRS 24-6-402-4A, and to discuss matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiators as permitted in CRS Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Is there any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Noesworthy?
Yes. We will move into executive session. Hello, thank you. We're all back. I reconvene this meeting at 6:45 p.m. For the record, council met in executive session for discussion and possible action to discuss the potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property regarding Buckley Park, the Carnegie Building, and other city facilities as permitted in CRS 246-402-4A, and to discuss matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiation as permitted in CRS 246-402-4E. No decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is actually proclamations, and our wonderful folks that declined having us move the scheduler around have asked if we can present this at the next city council meeting, which I believe we would have support for.
Sure.
Thank you. So, I believe the next item would be the consent agenda.
Notes. City operational.
Oh, city operations, yes. Thank you. City manager, what would you like us to be aware of?
So, appreciate that, Mayor and council. We do have an operational update on the capital improvement plan, cost increases. Part of continuing to keep the council informed as we come... Budget amendments, budget resolutions, and just kind of what we're seeing within the city and the operations is, right now, is some increased costs when we're going out to bid for construction, and I think everyone's seeing it everywhere that is going through. Wanted to give a presentation. Cynthia is going to kick it off in regards to what they've seen in our purchasing department when we've gone out for bid, and then we'll also have Allison Baker and Jennifer Holland come in and talk about how that's actually affecting some of our CIP projects. So, just informational, no action to be taken, but just as an FYI, here's what we're seeing, and here's the increased costs that we are incurring at this point.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Protem, and councilors. Cynthia Sneed, Finance Director. I'm here tonight just to give sort of an intro to the CIP Division and the airport. But so, we have... In purchasing, we've seen some issues with the recent bids that we've put out for formal solicitations with a lot of cost overruns. All right, so most of the projects that we have bid so far this year, we've bid 10 of them, most of them originated from the new CIP Division. So, in a moment, I'll invite Jen Holland, the manager of that division, to come up and provide some additional detail, and also Tony Vicari from the airport is available if you have questions on his. But we've, like I said, we've done 10 solicitations for construction-related projects so far this year, and what we're seeing is we've got... In general, we have a 69% overrun. The bids came back 69% over the budget amount. Again, all construction-related, and if we look at just April, it's even worse. We've got an 80% return on that, of those bids over the original budget for that, and we also received two non-bids, no bids, and that was on the alleyway reconstruction and the ADA ramps and sidewalks. So, when we inquired what the... Two of the contractors, what was the cost for the increase? It was... They cited supply chain issues, fuel and other cost increases, lack of available labor, and then timing concerns for delivery of those projects. So, it's not any one particular department, it's not any one particular project, it's a pattern that we're seeing, and I just wanted to make you all aware of that as we look at the cost of the... To complete these CIP projects. So, with that, I'm going to invite Jen to come up and talk about the CIP-specific projects, and certainly, you know, whenever you have questions, just ask.
Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Good to see you. We are looking at some significant increases over our estimated construction costs going into the first four projects that were bid that were ready to go to contract, so we did want to bring those to council, and they're on your consent agenda tonight. Devon has a document, a resolution included that lists those that you probably saw in your packet, and we've broken them out by fund, and Jennifer has the project-by-project breakdown of the impact of where the cost is and how we would like to address those to move forward in 2022 with these projects.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. Yes, we have seen bids coming in considerably higher than anticipated and wanted to get this out in front of you as quickly as possible. There are a lot of other projects that are nearing being ready for bid, so we wanted to get this out here first. Let's see, the first one is the water treatment plant reclaim/sludge management. Came in 43% over budget. The concrete sidewalks and aprons and a small retaining wall up at the College Mesa Water Treatment Plant came in also very high. We had a heads-up from the engineer late last year that he was anticipating it being higher than the $48,000 budget, but even at that time, nobody was seeing it going to The next one that is on the resolution that Devon prepared is the Santa Rita Raw Water Pump. That was one that was budgeted and ordered in '21, and they tried to deliver it like right at the very end of the year. I believe it was actually the 31st, and they were not able to deliver it, so it was delivered on January 3rd, so we need to put some budget in to cover that just because it was an unanticipated late delivery. The next one on the list is the West Ninth Street Water Line replacement. We are still evaluating that one. We've asked the contractor to go back and reevaluate a few things, so we're not asking for any action on that one right now. The next one is SCADA, and this one just didn't get re-appropriated. I think it was set up in October, and we forgot to mention, you know, to bring it forward because of the timing of when it was originally set up and also then the need for the carry forward, so that's a new one. And then, for the 2022 budget for CIP out of Fund 43, the Water Fund, we originally had $10,765, $765,000 in there, and I have all of the lines in the spreadsheet. They all added up to those tallies. I just hid them all because there's no way you needed to see projects that we aren't bringing anything new to you on, but there are some of them that we are going to see savings on this year, and the anticipated savings would be from delays in construction, ones that can't move forward this year as budgeted due to not being far enough along in the design process. They're just not ready to go to bid. Material lead times on West Ninth Street, that bid they came in, they told me it was going to be 26 weeks to get the fittings for the pipe, which would essentially put us at, you know, like the end of the year. So, that's part of why we're having them reevaluate it, but this is... These lead times are figuring into other projects as well. So, overall, we are going to have some savings this year because there's some projects that aren't going to be constructed. We are not going to go over what was budgeted and approved for CIP as a whole nor in any fund, even if we do get the authorization to increase the budget on these. In the sewer fund, it's just the one, the SCADA, and in the Streets Fund, there's the overlays and... Which is Millen overlay, and then some OGFC, some seal coating, surface preservation of gigline gulch that we got high bids on as well, higher than anticipated. The ADA ramps, as Cynthia had mentioned, the ADA ramps, the 50/50 sidewalk, we got no bids, none. And alley reconstruction, we got no bids. We haven't completely given up. They're still here because we are still evaluating options of how we can move them forward, maybe in a limited fashion, get some of it done, or if, worse comes to worse, we might have to wait until next year because it is May, and the contractors are booked for the season is what they're telling us. We did some calling around to the contractors about these, and that's what they told us, is that they're booked for the season. is that they're booked for the season. Let's see. So, we are asking that, that you approve additional funds for these projects that are in yellow, and as indicated on that resolution form that Devin prepared for you, and we will assure you that we're not going to be going over the overall totals for those funds or for CIP as a whole, and then also, we're working on, I'm working with everyone in the various departments to try and change the cycle for when we do these projects, to try and get it so that we design, have a design done by, say, September, so that we can pull together bidding documents and bid over the winter, and then award a contract in January, and that way, we give the contractors the time that they need to plan their work. I mean, we want them to give us their best professional work, we need to provide them some time to plan that work, and in this environment, we really need to give them a lot of time to order their materials. So, we're working on changing the cycle of when things are done a bit in order to help minimize these problems going forward, but this is what we are seeing and where we are with the projects thus far this year.
Thank you, Jennifer. Questions?
Yeah.
Counselor, I'm going to start down at this.
No, go ahead.
Counselor Baxter.
So, if I, if you'll scroll down just a little bit so we can see the top of that page, and if you plus it so we can magnify it just a little bit, please, that'd be great. So, originally, in the 2022 budget in the Water Fund, there was a $10.7 million estimate of CIP projects?
Correct.
And now, there's only a $5.2 million estimate of CIP projects?
Correct.
So, so, the, so, we're looking at increases in the current projects, but obviously, we're deleting some that we had in there originally?
Not deleting, they're simply, one of them, the 3 million gallon tank, for example, and that one's like a $3 million job. Bohannon Houston, the engineering firm has come back, and they will be working on the design of that through this year, so it will not be constructed this year.
So, they've been moved forward till the next year?
Yes.
So, our anticipation of doing $10 million worth of projects is now only going to be $5 million, even with the cost increases?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Thank you for the presentation. It's not good news, obviously, because that's going to cost us a lot more, but out of our control, your control. If I understand correct, you're asking for an increased budget for the increased cost for those projects?
Correct.
And that will trigger down in the budget and the forecasts that we see, I'm looking at the finance staff on our monthly and quarterly updates, we see the anticipated forecast and end-of-year forecasted fund balances, sorry about that. Is that, do you remember that, we had that like three weeks ago, I guess, that discussion?
Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. So, to answer your question, I think what you're talking about is the budgeted fund balance, not the actuals.
Yeah.
So, at this time, this presentation is not reflecting, they're not pulling back any of those projects. If we were to bring back a reduction in those projects, then yes, you would see that reflected. I think Jen could speak better than I could about where they're at in the process as far as what projects moving forward, which projects are not. It sounds like you guys are still maybe working on that to some degree.
Certainly, there's new information, we're pushing information to get information on all the projects, and so we're getting more information as we go, and we were looking at more of a mid-year kind of adjustment on some of the ones that we know aren't going to go. There's some that we know now that aren't going to go, but there's others that we don't think are going to happen, but we haven't given up on yet, we're still trying, and so we don't want to go through and do all of those pullbacks just yet.
No, and I fully understand. I'm just trying to see if you increase the budget because you have certain projects that are more expensive, and that will trigger back into the anticipated forecasted end-of-year fund balance as well as, no, that's it, I guess. It might be also beneficial to reflect those projects that you have correctly marked as, between parentheses, savings, if the project is not going to happen this year, to also reflect that, if you're certain that it's not going to happen, to do that at the same time, because, you know, the forecasted fund balance will increase, oh, what is it, I can't see it on that number, but over here, it will increase quite a bit because of the increase in cost while we didn't take off the projects that are not going to take place. Gives us a better punctual view of what the forecasted end-of-year balance would be based on what we know at this time.
And that is something that we talked about and we considered. We wanted to make sure that it was very clear that we were not moving funds between one project to another. We wanted that to be very separate, and so that's why it's not part of the current paperwork and documentation that Devin's prepared.
Allison, did you want to add something?
Hi, just in response to your inquiry, we're working on our five-year CIP program, and that does reflect our best understanding of what we're anticipating moving to 2023. Devin had indicated that it was a little premature to start pulling dollars out, so we weren't anticipating that, but we really look to finance and determining how the best approach to put it in the budget is.
Yeah, and I, I surprise you maybe a little bit with that request, but I think for me as one counselor, it would be beneficial to see, even though I know the project is not that, it's just not happening this year, so it's just moving to the next year, but we see these updated forecasts, and it, it works both ways, up and down.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I think with the timing, and once they have a good indication of what is moving forward, we would bring those back and reflect the reduction in the budget, and the resolution that you'll see later this evening, you'll see on the Art North Project, there was a reduction in that budget, because there was too much needed, or there was more requested than what is needed, and so this would follow the same process, it was just figuring out which projects really will move forward and which ones won't once they've kind of hit the ground, as they've said, and exhausted all of their options, so.
Yeah, and maybe, just to follow up, since you brought up the Art Rank Park project that had good news, is that going to be presented, or is that just straight away to the consent agenda? Because I had a question on what, what happened, basically. I'm not sure if someone can answer that, or?
Are you?
I'm not.
I think that would need to be Parks and Rec to be able to answer that particular question. I'm not sure if Terry's on, online, or if you want to ask the question, maybe we can collect him, and then it'll be ready for, if you pull it off consent.
Okay, we can do that.
If that works.
So, I would like to add, just that I attend for Counselors' benefit as the liaison to the Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting. We had a detailed meeting on Monday, which I guess was just yesterday, and Allison presented the draft CIP plan for the next five years, and I think, you know, it's in draft, and it's, on today's dollars, it could increase, but I am looking forward to that next iteration so it can actually share with all of council, because I think it's important to see the volume and the cost of what you're projecting to come down the pipeline, and we'll also have to discuss appropriate issues, which may go over to the Alt Fab, and we'll discuss that later. Some are big-ticket items, and some are more maintenance, so I think we have to have a larger discussion of how to finance that. But I appreciate the first level of work that you did and presented it to the Advisory Board, and I believe there's an intention to bring that to all of council, is there not?
There is, there is. We'd like to go through IAB one more time with a more refined document and a few more pieces of information added, and then with their comments, bring those to council at that point.
Very good. Any other questions? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, now, we're on to the review of the consent agenda. Now, I'm just going to read this. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. Does council have any items to be removed?
You might want to read the consent agenda first.
Oh, yes, sure, please, thank you.
I always forgot that, so.
No problem. Go ahead and please read the consent agenda items.
Items 8.1 through 8.3 are approval of minutes. 8.1 is approval of minutes from the April 19th, 2022, City Council's special meeting. 8.2 is approval of minutes from the April 19th, 2022, City Council's study session, and 8.3 is approval of minutes from the April 19th, 2022, City Council's regular meeting. 8.4 is discussion on possible action concerning a resolution to amend the 2022 budget. 8.5 is a request for a public hearing for text amendments to the Three Springs Codes and Standards related to parking requirements to be held on May 17th, 2022. 8.6 is a request for a public hearing for South Forklot 1R-R amendments, also to be held May 17th, 2022. 8.7 is a request for a public hearing for Animus Mountain Vista preliminary plan development, rezoning, and minor subdivision, 50 Animus View Drive, to be held May 17th, 2022. And 8.8 is a request for a public hearing for the Highway 3 Third Edition Durango Mesa Bonds Annexation, north of 1075 Highway 3, to be held on June 7th, 2022. 8.9 is final approval of ordinance O2022-15, authorizing a facility lease with Agile Space Industries Incorporated at 820 Airport Road, and declaring an effective date. And 8.10 is final approval of ordinance O2022-16, amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durango, regulating the use of vehicles on parks, trails, and open space, and creating an additional exception for the use of Class 1 electrical-assisted bicycles on trails located within the Twin Boots Development within the city, and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Does any counselor have an item they wish to be removed?
Yeah, just the item 8.4 for that, as we discussed a second ago.
Any others?
Yes, I'd like to remove 8.10.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the items removed?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? May we have the vote?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Okay, item number 8.4. Do you want to talk to us a little bit about your questions, Counselor Bosmans?
Well, this was the topic we just discussed, which was the higher cost than anticipated for a variety of projects, and that was clarified. I was just seeking some background or more information about the, I guess, positive news, where we have money coming back associated with the Art Rank Park to Demon Bridge project. I'm not sure, oh, that was the topic, so I'm not sure if Terry was available or will be available, and otherwise, we'll just move on, I guess.
So, Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. So, we worked with Parks and Rec on all of these adjustments that are Parks and Rec related, so that's going to be the post-maintenance, that's going to be the Art Rank Park to Demon Bridge, and so, when we were looking at some of those budgetary numbers, this one in particular was brought to council for reappropriation in February, after which Parks and Rec went back and was looking at some of their budgets and their contracted information, and so it was determined that there was too much appropriated, and so that's why we're putting that budgetary amount back in. So, they have enough to complete the project, there was too much appropriated. If you need specifics about the actual project, we can see if Terry's online and can answer the question, but that's the, sort of the history on that particular project, so similarly to what we just discussed, once the CIP Division goes through their projects and those timelines, we will bring back a reduction to those projects as well, so that council and the public are able to see what projects are moving forward on a budget basis and which ones are not.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Terry is available, but it's just surprising because the cost went up, what was it, 69 to 82%, and then here we have an estimated budget of 1.9 million, and instead of it going up 60 or 80%, it goes down 800,000, that's a significant drop, and I was just curious to see what the background on that changes, I mean, it's not.
Sure, so that one was a project that was originally budgeted for in 2021, so the contract for that would have been put in place in 2021. We weren't seeing as high costs then, and so when we brought this for council for some reappropriation dollars, there was too much included, and that's why we're bringing it back to just bring that budget down to what we need for the contracted amount to finish it for that project, so.
Well, that's satisfactory, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Do we wish, is there a motion for?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item, is it 7.4?
Eight.
8.4.
I'll second. Any discussion? Let's have the vote.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Nocerwory?
Yes.
Okay, item 8.10. Counselor Baxter, can you?
Yes, this is the final approval of the ordinance 2022-16, which will approve Class 1 electrical-assisted e-bikes on trails located within the Twin Boots Development within the city, and one thing was, I want, it says in declaring an effective date, and I would like to, do we have that effective date?
If you approve it tonight, it's effective 10 days after publication, so.
Publication will be on Saturday.
So, 10 days after Saturday, don't have a calendar in front of me, but that's, today's the?
60s, maybe?
Yeah, about middle of the month, so we could, we could certainly get the exact date.
It's okay, I, it's, thank you. I mean, because they're allowed there now because of our trial period, but I just wanted to celebrate this opportunity to include even more people in being fit and healthy in our community, and being able to take advantage of riding with friends who maybe aren't so capable, or themselves have had surgeries and other such things, so I'm very excited about this, and I, I see this as a beginning to look at how we can include more people in being healthy on our trails. I just wanted to celebrate it.
I think it's a great reason to celebrate. Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I would move that we approve item 8.10.
A second.
Anyone else want to join in celebration as part of the discussion? I'll add my point that I think, I think it's important, you got it, I think it's important statement about inclusivity, thank you. Anyone else?
I did at the last meeting as well, so I'm very, I think it's a great move forward and, and long overdue, so I'm excited that we finally got here.
Can we have the vote, please?
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Nocerwory?
Resounding yes. Thank you. All right, we have no public hearings tonight, we have no introduction of ordinances, and we have no general business items to discuss, so we are moving on to council reports and actions. And under the Boards and Commission Liaisons Report, this is where, and I'm, City Attorney, I may need some help here, this is where we ask to amend the meeting to include a discussion and vote on the selection of one position that needs to be filled, which may also then have an influence on another board, so, may I open this up now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start with this, and then we'll move into it. Council met on Friday and Monday with several dozen applicants for the various boards and commissions. We read their material, those of that participated read their materials. In the old days, we used to get five minutes for an interview, we tried to keep it between eight and 10 minutes, so it is speed interviews. Then we met, as a majority of council, on Monday, right after the first meeting, to finish this process to select and the boards and the different peoples who would serve on the boards, and they were notified, Faye, that those selections were made, and they were notified on Mon, I believe, Monday afternoon, because at my meeting, people knew. Thank you. With, Faye informed me that we do have an opening on the planning. With, Faye informed me that we do have an opening on the Planning Commission, which I might be either a permanent or a alternate, depending on how the discussion flows. So that needs to be filled, but there may be, that may alter some discussion around, perhaps thinking of a different position for a person for this strategy in long-term finance. I'd like to see if any, I'm going to turn to both Councillor Beale and Councillor Baxter, because you participated in the nomination selection. Do you have anything to add to that description?
Well, I think that, just to make it clear, that when we made these appointments, we were unaware of that additional position on the Parks, on the Planning Commission. And so it doesn't, it was kind of interesting, because during our conversations, we were kind of wishing we had another position on the Planning Commission. So it's kind of like our wishes were fulfilled. So now we just need to decide who indeed we would like to put into those positions and how that might affect the Salt Fab, for example.
So to fill in the other councillors for the discussion, I can, I will name the names, because it was a public meeting. Originally, we talked about Brian Devine, who had served on the I A B for quite a few years. Wow, wouldn't he, and his first choice was to be on the Planning Commission. Wouldn't he make a great Planning Commissioner, possibly an alternate, so as a way of grooming into that position? So we really wanted to take advantage of his service, but at the time didn't have that position available, because there were many good people with more experience. So one of the things that we also then did as part of that, just to give the full context, is we had also suggested that Dave Peters remain on the Salt Fab, which was, he had asked to be on two boards, which we have people on two boards. Roger Zee is on two boards. And to find a spot for Brian that made use of his expertise. And because Salt Fab was his second choice, we made that suggestion. So I would like to see if you have a proposed solution.
I do. As a matter of fact, if, if it's appropriate, I would make a motion. So we originally had put Alma Evans in as the alternate for the Planning Commission, because we didn't have space to make her to full, because she is currently the alternate, and she's been serving well for a number of years. So I would like to move that she be moved into the full position on the Planning Commission, and giving it Brian Devine the capability then to be appointed to the alternate Planning Commission position. And then because that frees up the Salt Fab position, to have Dave Peters also serve on the Salt Fab. So those would be my, that would be my motion and my recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? May we have the vote?
Councillor Beale?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Abstained.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noeswirth?
Yes. Did you want to abstain?
I maybe should abstain. I was supporting the majority of council, but actually, I think I will abstain.
Wonderful.
And that would be because neither, you weren't involved in the conversations.
Right.
And Olivia chose not to participate in the appointment.
Right. I was kind of, yes, because I support the effort and the work that you guys did.
I know, because you liked it, yes.
But I, yeah, not being there, I abstained.
So Faye, will you be calling the two people mentioned, Brian and David?
And actually Alma also.
And Alma?
Yes.
And sharing this with them? And, and also sharing with them, while they may not listen to it, this was the original discussion around how to do this. And with this new information, I actually think, to use the phrase, I think it's an elegant solution. Thank you. Councillors, reports from your different commissions and any reports you wanted us to be aware of?
I guess I'll start. I have, I think, a few. So April 21st, we had the Durango Applata County Airport Commission meeting. They're at 90% schematic design now for the terminal renovation expansion, Phase 1A. And, hang on, I was going to throw this up and see what else. We talked about the runway rehabilitation, the overage costs that we've seen and we've talked about. Let's see, oh, the face mask mandate went through May 3rd, which is today.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. No, today's May 3rd. Today's May 3rd. And so I don't know if that, if it's done and expired now, but it went through May 3rd, so we'll see. Let's see, right now, we are at, March finished at 95% of 2019 levels. Frontier Airlines still operating twice week between Durango and Denver. And then they are, start up the Las Vegas route again in June. And that was, I think that was the big topics there. And then I had the Creative Economy Commission meeting on April 26th. We had, oh, our lodgers tax application is finalized and out. And so if people want to apply for the creative economy portion of the lodgers tax, they can get an application and fill it out, and then we'll, the C E C will start to review those. I believe we're going to have like a separate, like, working group that will review all those applications and then bring it to the C E C and then to City Council in the end. And then we did the Durango Creates Grant, our first round of the Durango Creates Grant Review. We reviewed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 different proposals and funded five of them. We have others, a mural, I A Music, the Animus City Night Bazaar, 20 Moons is doing like a video one, and then Stillwater Music. Those were some of the ones that we funded. Let's see, what else did we, I had, okay, the metal, medical provider access, yes, concerns and plans for improvement. They did a presentation to a bunch of medical providers, nurses. There was some great things that have come out of this even so far. So there was a, there was some concern, and we, they went and talked to Mercy about delaying ER care due to staffing. And they've actually added staff to the ER in Mercy because of that discussion. And then there wasn't a pathologist always on call. And there was a case where a patient was there for an extra two hours before surgery, like, on the table waiting for a pathologist to come. And so now they have added an on-call pathologist on all surgery days. So there's been a few great things that have come out of this group so far. But yeah, so it was a great presentation, and I thought that was terrific. And then, oh, I had Salt Fab, that's right, yesterday. So we had a Salt Fab meeting yesterday. Renee Lewis with the I A B came and presented to us. They're going to do a new rate study, and so we're going to hold off on our reserve policy for water and sewer, so we can coordinate efforts with the new rate policy. But we did do trash and recycling yesterday, a draft of that, and so that will be coming to council. And then we'll be working on airport and transportation, thank you. I was like, what's the other one? Coming up soon. We talked about preliminary revenue budget assumptions for 2023. It was great, because Devon presented Fort Lewis College class, an upper level economics class, did sales tax projections for us. And they did five different models, where they compared different sales tax projections on all these little micro and macro levels, where we could potentially be. And it's kind of crazy, because the ranges, like, $2 million, like, can go either way. But it was great for, I think, like, planning and whatnot. Let's see, we talked about, and then we talked about, I had that email I sent out to all you guys with council priorities, and then for Salt Fab, and how to align them with what Salt Fab can do, and then what our staff can handle and do as well. And so we kind of laid out a plan for the rest of the year, and then 2023, too. And yeah, so that was great. And I think that maybe that was all I did.
Great. Great. So great to hear progress on the hospital staffing. That's, I think that committee is, is helping facilitate a real consideration of what's necessary in the community.
And I love the term perking with the Fort Lewis College and, and taking advantage of that skill to create scenarios and to see how that all might work. And so how does it play out if we choose this and choose this? That's awesome. That's such a great decision tool.
I agree.
Other councillors with updates, reports?
I can go if no one has me. Jose, I was going to talk about the Library Advisory Board. We met on April 20th, and I was going to give an update, just briefly at that time, on the library director position, but I wasn't sure if you wanted to give that update. I think you have more current information.
Sure, absolutely. So as I'm giving the councillors during our one-on-ones this week, we do have a very good pool of candidates that have expressed interest in the library director. Probably one of the deepest pools that we've gotten of interest in, in all of the director positions that we've gone, went out for. I think we have about 37 applicants that are qualified and have leadership experience in a public library. So we are beginning to work through that. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with the consultant for them to go over who they believe of those 37 should be ones we should seriously take a look at and do an interview with. What we'd probably be looking at is probably doing somewhere between seven to eight virtual interviews here shortly, and then lowering that down to maybe three finalists that we would bring to Durango the first part of June to actually have interviews in. And as we get more information, would definitely be happy to share that. But we are very pleased with what we were able to achieve in the search.
Wonderful.
Thank you. And so that meeting that we had on April 20th also was, of course, heavily focused on the financial analysis, which I won't go into the details of that, because we had a great Board and County Commissioner joint meeting follow up with that conversation. So just, we'll just be moving ahead then to formally evaluate the demand, the polling next, for library services, satisfaction with current services. If we were to expand, what would it look like? And then the opportunity to look and engage the community with finding out if we were to reprogram library funding, what that might go to. So lots of action on the library board.
On the H VAC.
And the H VAC, we did discuss that.
Can't forget that.
That was great, great, great to finalize that as well.
The city and the county will be splitting the cost from the joint sales tax for the, the funding needed to address the H VAC system within the library.
So that's good. That was it.
Go ahead.
No, I'm done.
You don't have any updates?
Not at this point.
Oh. There was a multimodal meeting on, that's a while ago, 4/20? No, I gave this update, no, it's not, I didn't, sorry. It was mostly on capital improvement project prioritization. And there was one important topic that was brought up, and Sarah Hill is here. So I'm not sure if you want to add to that, but I can just summarize the last one, the email that was sent about the concerns expressed by Town Plaza Management for a communal underpass going there. And then staff being in the next steps to work with the tenants, I believe, and see if there's any solution to address that, so that the project can go forward. And maybe at the same time, we should look at alternative options. But that is a bit of a red flag for that project. And the other topic I had, or just a brief update, I went to the Hawk Tank event, where young future entrepreneurs were able to present business plans and were able to get, I guess, grants is the right word, for their work, selection of number one and two. There was high school participation, there was college students' participation, including, I believe, from New Mexico. So that was a really nice event, showing commitment and financial support for business plans and ideas. That's all I had.
Great, great.
Do you have one thing, Mayor?
Oh, yes.
If I may, just for the council and the public here, I do believe this is Victor Locke's last meeting to broadcast for the City Council. For those of you who may not know Victor, but you're sure you're very familiar with the amazing projects he's done during his tenure here, specifically with the D E G O channel, broadcasting and the programming that we've done on TV has been tremendous and has had a lasting impact with the community in Durango and outside of Durango. Very well recognized nationally, and also does just a tremendous job in getting all of this on air and ready to go for us every time. So we are very appreciative of everything that Victor has done. Victor, I know you're back there working, in which you normally always are behind the scenes, but from myself, from the City of Durango, just a big thank you for what you have done and all of the amazing accomplishments you've done for the City of Durango. Very much appreciated, and you will be missed. Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, Victor.
And thank you so much, support for, giving support for doing Council Connection, always understanding about flubs and speaking and not looking in the right direction of the camera, and doing a great job writing up reports and taking advice on what we might change and working together on it. And it made it easy and it made it fun. Thank you.
Yep, you'll be missed. I have just two reports. I was at the I A B meeting, and as I said earlier, Allison shared her five-year, kind of proposed five-year plan, draft proposed five-year plan. And so there's some ambitious work ahead. It will, particularly in the water area, I watched the council to see that, because the way she's laid it out, it has potential to draw down that water fund balance significantly. So I think you'll all be eager to hear, to see and hear what she has to say about that. So that was part of the news. And then I attended the Community Relations Committee, Commission meeting last week. And I'm going to, I'm looking to Erin, and I don't see her here. Oh, there she is, there she is. We had the two consultants, from the D E I consultants come, and they were incredibly impressive and talked about how they work to, you know, both build the case and just get people beginning to be comfortable with the crucial conversations that need to take place. And I wanted to come away saying that down the road, it might be useful to have them either present to council or to meet with us. I don't know what's available. But I came away in their half-hour discussion, learning some new things, getting a sense of what it takes to have a safe space, to have critical conversations, and how to become, to be comfortable being uncomfortable. So I wanted to share that with folks as well. I wanted to applaud staff for finding consultants to work with, who I think can help all of us on the council. I do have one update, which is just to share with council, that I will not be at the next City Council meeting on May 17th in three years. I've only missed one City Council meeting, and that's because I was on a plane, and the meeting was on a Monday. But it is my 40, I'm celebrating 40 years this year of blissful marriage, and we're going to take a little holiday. So I will be away in two weeks, but don't worry, I'll be back. Anyone else? Any reports? Oh, and Melissa, the Mayor Protem, will be taking over next meeting in my stead, and I thank you very much, Melissa, for that role. On that note, let's adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.